No, that's what I've been doing is. You know, my leg issue.
But that's an amazing opportunity.
Exactly.
With the daughter and the son-in-law. Yeah. And the kids.
No, you make it in the night. We spent thirty days in port. We spent.
London and Paris. Because I paid for London and Paris last year. And she started planning this year and they paid the whole. They went to Austria and Vienna and they landed in Paris.
And then the night. They told them we're going to be sightseeing everywhere else. It's not about just the concert.
Right, right.
And I'm like. It's so many years. If I could get a ticket. So we literally here and we.
I can only live today. Apparently not to.
You tried for her.
Yeah, well, I looked it up and I was gonna. You know, put down payment or see if they could go on that day. Then I could all. Was I got. Welcome, you guys. Happy first week, boy.
How you been?
But what can you do?
Well, they went ahead and planned it for his fifteenth birthday. They went to Munich and they went to a whole bunch of places.
Someone said that that'd be the last time you'll ever hear your last.
I lied. It was a moment.
At the moment. Every time I feel like that. And I tell me before. Can I actually, can I tell you?
Just because of.
Shouldn't play into your decision to do what you think is the best thing for the city. But I just think.
Can I tell you something?
Awesome.
And I had to take them because if not, my mother would have. Literally killed.
How are you?
I felt like a man. That we were going to. Well, she had a try, try and it's out there all that. And by the way, we have three queens, baby, American and large. I was to go see Laura. Oh, yeah, my mom worked.
Okay, you know, we're saying you were right. So you can't. Officer Adonis Lorenz. I like to be surprised. I like to be surprised. I don't like to read a lot. All right. Only gossip. Yeah, that's what it's all about, right? That's my. I'm muffled through the day. I don't worry about it.
Well, you're telling me if I am welcome. I can put it out loud. Great stadium.
Oh, yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Hey. He's a Miami kid. I get my time soon, but we are. Listen, we should give. But it looks, man, the campus also. It's. And I'm glad he's got his classes like two buildings. They're not gonna get done. No. Oh, man, geez. He is seeing the building, something near the Grand Central that looks like another museum.
Oh, great, great. Well, yeah, I think my mother liked them and picked them out for. When I was younger, stupid.
No, it's extraordinary. Even in the last twenty years that I've been here.
Yeah.
You know, it's extraordinary. So como es que se. That's so. Hey, Larry. Yeah, we own for all names. Was the company that built that bridge.
Yes.
Another controversy on that.
Doesn't understand. People can't see that far.
So we know it's cool.
Yes.
That was more working than.
Call the roll, please. Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fahad?
Here.
Councilman Santeen?
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present. Thank you. Please rise if you are able for the invocation by our Vice Mayor Fahad.
We pray for the agenda set forth before us this evening. We ask that we be granted the ability to work together in harmony when there's honest disagreement and dissent. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak. And the patience to listen receptively and empathically when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues that we encounter. And a keen sense of the welfare and needs of our residents. May we be reminded that we are not only leaders but also servants. And that it's our responsibility to serve the common good of all the residents of Miami Springs. Amen.
Please join us in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge. Welcome everyone to our August twelfth city council meeting. It's nice to see those of you that are able to join us in the audience and to those of you that are joining us at home. We're glad you're with us. Let's get started with awards and presentations and our first agenda item. Is recognizing and awarding police officer Adonis Yoranes for the life-saving award. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. This memorandum I'm about to read you was prepared by Sergeant Albert Vargas. This incident actually occurred in May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Finally, we're able to get everything lined up and Officer Adonis is Lawrence is here with us finally. Sergeant Vargas stated that he's writing to wholeheartedly recommend Officer Lawrence for the life-saving award in light of his. Exemplary actions during a recent emergency situation. On May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at approximately seven twenty P M, Officer Lawrence demonstrated exceptional courage and quick thinking when responding to a distress call involving a male. Who was pinned under a vehicle. Upon arrival, less than one minute after the call was dispatched, Officer Lawrence found a male trapped under a car. Which had fallen on the victim's chest and face. While the male was working on it for mechanical issues. Recognizing the urgency of the situation, Officer Lawrence acted swiftly with assistance of a civilian to lift the car enough. To provide the victim with the opportunity to remove himself from under the vehicle with non-life-threatening injuries. His prompt response undoubtedly played a crucial role in saving the victim's life. And his actions are a testament to his dedication to duty and the safety of our community. This situation. Could have turned much worse within seconds. And I was in a similar situation and he was the only officer there. I luckily had a whole shift with me. And we were able to do the same thing that he was able to do by himself. With the assistance of the civilian. So in addition to his heroic actions, Officer Lawrence consistently demonstrates professionalism, integrity, and a strong commitment to serving the public. His daily performance and dedication to do duty reflect positively on our community. And the values we uphold as a police department. With that being said. He recommended that Officer Lawrence be recognized for his bravery and outstanding outstanding service. This award is rarely given out due to the criteria involved. It truly has to be a situation where someone's life is in peril. And it was saved by the officer. And not by an A E D or something to that effect. Okay. That said, Officer Lawrence, congratulations, sir.
You're on the spot.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I stand humbled here before you today. And grateful for the opportunity to serve and protect our community. Recently, I was in a position to help someone in a moment of great need. While I'm honored to be recognized, I believe that it is the moment to reflect. Not just on my actions, but on the dedication and commitment of all my fellow officers. In this critical moment, training, instinct, and strong sense of duty. We all shared guided me. Well, this is what we do every day. Watch out for each other and ensure that everyone in our community is safe. I'm I am proud to be part of this police department and grateful for the support I've received from all of you. Together, we make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chief. And Officer, would you like to take a photo? And with all the. The other officers and also.
I think it's them first.
And this campus too. Thank you, Sylvia.
Yes, I know.
Let me keep.
Yes.
Someone. We were going to recognize the yard of the month is Mrs. That. Yeah. No. Well, we use that. Can you say it from the podium that was reported?
I was, I just wanted to make a comment with this award, the life-saving award for Officer Adonis Yoranes. I'm so grateful. Of course, we're so grateful, our community, to have officers, police department of this caliber. That are able to to think quickly, to act responsibly. And and do everything that within their power. And I can just imagine it must have taken superhuman strength. And superhuman. Thought processes to figure out what needed to be done. But also extremely grateful for the response time because when you're talking about. Critical timing, the fact that we have a police department and there are a lot of. Qualities throughout the county and throughout Florida. That have, it can take twenty minutes for them to respond, half an hour for them to respond, sometimes in unincorporated Dade County. And the fact that our police department responds in minutes. This is an indication in this situation, as in so, so many others of. How. How thankful we are to to have a police department that has that ability to respond to its residents and to anything in our community. In such short time. So thank you again to our police department. And to the officer. And let's see, moving along with awards and presentations, we wanted to. We wanted to recognize and congratulate the Miami Springs Recreation Basketball Team as the twenty twenty-four. City of Hialeah Summer Tip-Off Invitational Champions. They won't be able to make this meeting or another meeting. Evidently, it's very hard. To get all the members together, especially with schools starting a vacation, but nonetheless. Our sincere congratulations and they make our town proud. They make justice as they make themselves proud and their their families and their team. They they make our town proud, so we thank them for that. And congratulations to them. And the next item on our awards and presentations was the Yard of the Month Award. For August and this month, our Parks Parks Board is the one that selects on a monthly basis a yard in Miami Springs. And nominates them for the Yard of the Month Award. So this month, the Yard of the Month Award goes to Yvette Vega. At nine sixty North Royal Pointyana Boulevard. And we'll get this certificate to them, but if anyone this month in August, make some time while you're driving around Miami Springs and just. Pass by nine sixty North Royal Pointyana Boulevard and admire our Yard of the Month and we thank them for beautifying our city. With that, we go to open forum. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? Okay, no one signed up to speak. Anyone virtually? Okay, thank you, Erica. So then we move to approval of council minutes. We have the approval for council minutes for June twenty-fourth. And which was a regular meeting and July twenty-third, which was a special council meeting are both up for approval.
It was special. It happened in the year twenty-nine twenty-four. That was a very special.
It's okay, Erica.
Nine hundred years in the future. What happens?
Is it nine hundred years later?
Hey.
Okay, so.
We're on top of it, man. We're on top of it.
All right.
One little error, Erica, in all these years.
Don't worry. She's tally marking.
Very prophetic.
Okay. Do I have a motion to for approval for either or both of these?
Motion to approve six A and B.
Second vote. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo? Yes. Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to agenda item eight, which is public hearings when we have two items up for. For public hearings. The first one is a second reading of an ordinance and I'll let. Who's going to read that?
Read it for the record.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Erica.
In ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, comprehensively amending chapter fifty-four Tree Protection Program of the city's Code of Ordinances to revise permitting procedures, regulations, and penalties relating to tree protection, removal, and relocation. Providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
To the chair. Yes, ma'am.
Roger, do you want to come up before I make a motion?
Sure. Does everyone want a quick brief?
Yes, please. And just this came before us before and we made several recommendations. We had a full discussion on this. It's something that I think all of us are very much on board of, you know, of of. Taking actions to make sure that we're protecting. Our tree canopy and where needed, where it's necessary to remove trees, that there is a really good, consistent. Methodology for it in place. So I want to thank. The Parks Board and Councilwoman Bravo, who took this on and worked together with you, Roger, and the rest of the community. I know. People have had a lot of input on this, so thank you.
So I'll just, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'll just add to that. I. A big thank you to Liz in our on our staff. She really helped a lot. And of course, George Fitzpatrick, who is. Our board cultural professor from U F and he he took a. A big interest in this ordinance and really helped.
And C G A.
And C G A, of course. Absolutely.
Yes, and I forgot to mention C G A and Sylvia and her staff are planners.
Absolutely. So just to very briefly summarize this, the changes from first and second reading. A majority of the changes are very technical in nature. You will see in in yellow highlight that they are identifying the tree names in particular, the particular scientific terminology that is appropriate. Updates to certain definitions and standards. For example, we've now standardized all of the. What do you call it? The tree pruning, tree care standards to comply with N C A three hundred. And then the real big substantive change in terms of the program's operation. Is that palm trees are no longer going to be counted for canopy replacement. So if you cut down an oak tree and it's permitted properly, you'll have to either, you know, plant replacement oaks. Or other trees or donate a contribution so that the city can plant those trees elsewhere. But no longer three palms for a palm, an oak.
Perfect.
And that's really it.
Okay. Roger, let's go ahead and open it up for public hearing then. And then we can continue. So I'm going to open it for public hearing. Is there someone that would like to speak during the public hearing? Yes, ma'am. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for updating this ordinance and bringing it into N C standards. We need to educate the residents so they stop cutting down trees. It really irritates. A lifelong resident almost like myself to see oaks. Out in their garbage to be picked up when they cut them down. All this hard work and money you have spent updating this ordinance is gonna be for naught if you do not get an arborist on staff. Somebody that works in public works, goes out, drives through the streets and can supervise. Your recreational or. Beautification programs and other projects. But since Tom Nash, and I'd known Tommy Nash since he was on Palmetto Drive with his parents. Since Tom Nash has retired and left the city. The old tree ordinance was just put on a shelf. Nobody ever really called the consultant that you have. And we're not spending much money in this area. When we wake up, we're going to be treeless and full of cement, a lot of concrete. Like our neighboring city, Hialeah. So I urge you to please, even if you have to raise a millage or two. Or whatever it costs on our taxes this year. Please bring back the arborist. In whatever position you want in public works. You have a new public works director, so I hope. That he can find his way to getting us an arborist on staff. And we can continue protecting the canopy. This is what's going to save us from the heat. This is what's going to save us from a lot of things, and it does keep Miami Springs beautiful. We are beautiful Miami Springs, but we're losing it with the canopy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Mary Owens, one sixty-nine Corridan.
Okay. And one of our very engaged and knowledgeable residents. Okay, so let's see, Roger, do you want to continue or does let's have any questions?
All of this question.
Again, we went through this pretty thoroughly before and a lot of changes were made. This was several months ago because it took some time to incorporate all the changes, all the. Well, since it was first done, but I'm saying even since when it came before council was several months ago, because then it took a lot of the comments and discussion that we had at that time. It took. A while to to go through them and evaluate them and incorporate them where appropriate.
Richard.
Yes, sir.
I just want to reiterate the point made in. In public hearing that this was a substantial review. And it took us quite a while and thank you. Councilwoman Bravo for 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 leading the charge here.
Thank you for allowing me as a council.
This is going to take an educational campaign at all levels.
Yeah.
For residents who've been here, for residents who are new here, and for residents coming in. Because it's 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 a it's significant changes. That need to be emphasized and underlined.
Okay, with that, is there a motion?
Motion to approve eight A.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I I'd just like to say for our residents and and as our resident Ms. Owen stated. You know, part of being Miami Springs is our tree canopy. It just that that's. Part of how we identify is a tree city. And that you go outside your house and you're already in, you know, like the saying says, you walk out the door and you're already in the park. The park experience starts and that's. It's critical to us. There can be some residents who are upset. With this ordinance, the purpose of the ordinance is to do something that I think everyone here on this council sees as part of our responsibility is to. Not just protect, but enhance and continue to develop because it's not enough. Whatever tree canopy we have right now, it's never enough. Trees are living organisms like everything else. They have a life, you know. Cycle. They are young. They get to middle age. They get old. And they get diseases and they are subjected to accidents, acts of nature and all this. So just like any human being that, you know. There's a beginning. And there's an end and somewhere in the middle, they may not even be able to fulfill that as sad as that is. That happens with a lot of our trees and sometimes some of our most beautiful and beloved trees. So. Protecting the trees that we can. When we can is very, very important. And I think this ordinance is a really good step in. In reinforcing something that has been part of the, you know, of of our community since it's in since its inception.
That's true.
Yes, sir.
We could direct our city manager and staff to maybe get back on the program of. You know, advertising to our residents, especially the new buyers of our community. We used to get it. I remember when I think when I first. Purchased my home twenty-some years ago. There was kind of a little bit of a flyer that kind of gave you some insight on what things you can do and not do.
I think I think that's a great idea. It should be on our website, you know, very, and we probably need to update that as information about. Our tree canopy, our tree ordinance, you know, more detailed and that can be part of the public awareness campaign.
Yeah, we definitely have to.
And it's just not new residents. It's, you know, residents that have been a long time. They have a tree and all of a sudden, you know. It's no longer desirable to them and, you know, they'd like to get rid of it. And, you know, each of us have our own situation, but ultimately it's we've taken. A vision for the city that protecting our trees is as important as just about any other aspect of, you know, of living in Miami Springs. So. This ordinance certainly is sets us in that direction even stronger than we've always been. One comment I wanted to make with the arborist, our public works director. Who was on staff was an arborist. Tom Nash was an arborist. He studied while he was. I think he was public works director and then became arborist and I'm looking at one. It was he was an arborist and then became public works director. Okay. But anyway, that's maybe something that, you know, hopefully we can pursue in our public works department is get someone trained to be that if we can't. At least to get that started. So with that, is there any more discussion? You have a first and a second? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add something to it. I think overarching and probably as important as having an arborist is, I think. Being a Tree City USA. Two out of the last three years, the we didn't apply or to be a tree city. So we currently aren't and a couple of years back also. So I think that that would also go a long way because I know that we have. An arborist. It would obviously be best if. an arborist. It would obviously be best if we had. How could it be any better than having your public works director actually be an arborist, right? And the ideal would be having an arborist on staff, but being a Tree City USA is a very rigorous process. And I think that that would go a long way to ensuring that you're utilizing the arborist that you have on retainer. Because there's a lot of things that you have to do in order to be a Tree City USA. And I know that we had been a Tree City USA for, you know, almost two decades in a row. And I think that hopefully with our new public works director and we had a brief conversation about it. I think that's something that we need to get back on. Because that'd go a long way towards getting us to just sometimes having the compliance things that you have to, you know, comply with. Will, will ensure that you're doing what you need to, to protect your tree canopy because that, that's what it's all about. So I think that that would be a huge priority for the city to get, get back on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, just a few things. Yes, we're gonna be promoting it. I was just talking to Tammy right now. We were just commenting it. We're gonna promote it. We're gonna make sure we get the message out and the residents understand. Second thing, we're in complete agreement with you Vice Mayor. We getting back into the Tree City USA program. That's the priority of ours and, and we'll get that done as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Vice Mayor, yes.
Councilman Santeen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to another public hearing item and this is agenda item 8B. And Erica, will you be reading that also?
Yes. An ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending the city's comprehensive plan by adopting the Evaluation and Appraisal Review, EAR, based comprehensive plan amendments, providing for transmittal, providing for conflicts, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Sylvia, did you want to say anything? Perhaps you could mention what you kind of mentioned. We did have a local, what is it called? Local planning.
Planning agency.
C meeting, LPA, earlier before this meeting to review the, this ordinance.
So yeah, just for the benefit of the residents who might be wondering why we're doing this now and why there was not a broader community engagement. The, the, the city went through an EAR-based amendment process just two years ago. That was not the, the actual timing of the cycle as required by statute, but the city was behind schedule to the point that it ended up bumping up against the cycle. But because it is so recent, we are at this point only making the minimal required changes by statutes to be in compliance, to stay in compliance. So that we can later, if necessary, can continue to make the changes that might come out of the other important processes that we're working on right now. As part of those processes, we will have more extensive public engagement. We will have discuss, we have been having discussions about, you know, all of your vision for, for these different areas. So the point right now is to make sure that we are on time, that we are in compliance, that Florida Commerce recognizes and, and approves our amendment. And just to like put our foot in the door there so that we can continue to work on the other processes that I, I see as much more substantial right now.
Thank you Sylvia. Okay, do we have a, a public hearing? I'll open this up for public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if anyone would like to speak, I'll allow you to come up. Anyone virtually, Erica?
No, no one.
All right, I'm closing the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve 8B ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Santeen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda and we have consent agenda for items nine A, B, C, D and E. Is there, does anyone on the council have an item that they'd like to pull for discussion on its own?
To the chair, I'd like to pull nine B and E.
B and E. What was the second one? I'm sorry.
B and E?
B.
Okay.
B, okay.
Is there a motion for the nine A?
Yep.
C and D?
Motion to approve nine A, C and D.
A second. Motion to approve A, C and D.
Of the consent agenda, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Santeen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to nine B. Let's see, Erica, can you read the resolution first and then I'll let Councilwoman Bravo speak?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement with Miami Dade County relating to the publication of legal advertisements and public notices on Miami Dade County's publicly accessible website, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Councilwoman?
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify for the record, if the city manager can just explain to for the record, what this agreement is about and, and it is a mandatory thing. It's, it's nothing, when people say interlocal agreements, we get scared. It's nothing serious.
No, it's, it's not mandatory, but it's to our benefit that we enter into this. Sometime, I mean, as far as our legal notices and our, like when we advertise our RFPs, we used to advertise in this publication called the Daily Business Review. Well, they stopped printing their newspaper and we've kind of left in a bind, as many other cities were. The state statutes indicated, and correct me if I'm wrong Heidi, the state statutes indicated or stated that we needed to be in a paper distributed on a, like a a newspaper of general circulation, which is, you know, has, yes, which is distributed regularly. But with the disappearance of the, of the, of that publication, they changed the statute saying that we can partner up with, I guess, a county and, and through a website. And Miami Dade County did. They created this website. We're gonna be joining them to advertise in the Miami Herald is extremely expensive. And this is a fraction of that cost. So this will allow us to be in compliance with state laws with all of our public notices and official notifications and, and RFPs, advertisements, legal advertisements, and it's to our benefit.
And JC, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason the county created this site is because other municipalities were experiencing, since the daily business review went out of circulation, a lot of other municipalities also were experiencing significant cost.
Yes.
And they were quite significant cost in advertising these notices. And so the county created this site so that the municipalities could all have a, a joint place to do this. It's a major cost savings and also more productive because there's one site where you can look for all the municipalities for their information.
Mayor, if I can just make a couple of notes. This doesn't allow us to notice things that are required by our charter to be noticed in a, in a newspaper of general circulation. We don't have too many of those requirements in the charter, but unless and until the charter is revised, anything that can, is required by the charter to be advertised specifically, we will continue to do that in a newspaper. And I also wanted to point out, I think the cost for this yearly is about $800, which is less than one advertisement. Much less. Elsewhere. So it's, it's a significant savings, not just to the city when the city is advertising, but to others who may need to advertise for applications that they have before the city. So it's, it's a it's a benefit across the board.
Great, thank you Heidi. Okay, with that, any more questions? Is there a motion to approve or a motion for nine A, nine B, excuse me?
Motion to approve nine B.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Santeen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, we move to nine E and Erica, you want to read that resolution?
A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving and adopting an amended building fee schedule, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Councilwoman, you had a question about?
Yes, I just want to thank staff for updating the fees. Our fee schedule was very dated. We weren't up, up to par, I believe, with other cities and we were just doing everything at more than a fraction of our cost. So I'm glad to see this fee schedule without even having to bring it up as an item. So that's the productivity level I see is, is arising in this department. So I just wanted to take note and just give a thank you to staff.
Oh, thank you. This is just the planning portion of it.
Right.
We're still now reviewing, you know, building department side of it. But much needed, the code was very, or the previous fee schedule was very vague and ambiguous and now was specific and where it needs to be.
And this, and I just want to add, this is a, an example of all the work that's going on behind the scenes in city hall with our staff, you know, with our city manager, assistant city manager, our city clerk's office, our attorneys, our planning department and all the other public works, all the, all the departments in the city. There's constantly so many items that are in the works or planned to be in the works as soon as, you know, these things get taken care of and you're all doing an amazing job. We, we're a very lean city. We don't have the staffing resources that, you know, some big cities have, you know, where they have departments, entire departments with staff to do that. And I've said it before and I mean it from the heart. Y'all do an amazing job for, for our residents and for our community and thank you for that. So with that, is there a motion?
Yes, motion to approve nine E.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Santeen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to new business and 11A and we have a resolution.
Although, excuse me. Although there's no monetary or financial gain to the Rotary as the abundance of caution and the president of the Rotary, and so I'll be recusing myself from this particular item and voting.
Thank you, Councilmen. Okay.
Don't go too far, okay?
Okay. Who is going to read this resolution?
I'll read it, Erica. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, approving an amendment to the transportation services agreement with the Hialeah Miami Springs Rotary Charitable Foundation, Inc. For senior citizen transportation services, providing for authorization, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Okay, JC, do you want to expand upon this?
Yes, this we applied for a grant a while back in partnership with the Rotary Club. Now, this relationship goes back a couple of years because the previous bus that we received, that we received the grant for was partnering with Rotary. We recently received word that we're gonna be gifted or awarded another bus. It's actually been ordered already. But the agreement with the Rotary Club was expiring, so we need to amend it to include this bus. If that makes any sense. That's what we're doing here.
Oh, is that what that is? Thank you.
Okay, so we're very, very grateful to the Rotary Club. As I've said numerous times, our civic clubs in our community are just jaw-droppingly productive, effective, hardworking and resourceful and, and generous, so generous with their, their time and their resources. And the Rotary Clubs, this has been going on for, I know as long as I've been on the council, you know, their assistance with the bus for for our transportation, for our senior centers, senior citizens to the senior center, to our adult community center. So we're very, very grateful to them for that. Is there?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve resolution 11A.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any discussion on that? Call the vote, please.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fahad, yes. Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Could you ask the president of the Rotary Club to come back, please?
In his capacity.
In his capacity as councilman. Councilmember, president at the at the ceremony where he became president, I was calling him president councilman or councilman president. I'm not sure which can first. I guess it's the situation. But in your free time, because you're also doing the centennial committee for the city, you're overseeing that and so many other things. I know you're, you're constantly meeting with people regarding city. In your free time, do you help your wife with her baking and stuff?
He recuses himself from that activity as well.
Just wondering.
Thank you, Walter.
He tucks the eggs for the gate.
All right, let's move to, oh, okay. So we're at other business and we're agenda item 12B and it's, I guess it's 12A, did we remove A? Okay.
Erica. Yeah. The computer's hot, you know, it's summer.
We have a follow-up discussion regarding using golf carts on city streets. This is something that we discussed a few months ago and something that we discussed actually like two, three years ago. We've been talking about this. So let's see, Councilwoman Bravo?
Well, I, I would have put it up for discussion. I just, I didn't know if my attorneys were ready, but if our attorneys have some input on the discussion item before we get into the next thing crannies, if we even have to.
Sure. So while Roger comes up to, to the podium, I think we, as the mayor noted, we've discussed this several times. And so as we prepared for today's meeting, we really wanted to keep the explanation simple so that we can discuss really what it comes down to, whether the city council wants to authorize golf carts in the community or not. That, that's the question. And so Roger has a, a brief update to provide. We can get into details if you'd like, but we'll start with a high level and then we'll, we'll take your lead.
All right. So good evening again, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to start off just very simple. Baseline, chapter 316 of the Florida statutes provides that golf carts are prohibited from operating on public roads. Low-speed vehicles, which a lot of our, a lot of the city's residents may have seen, are similar to golf carts, but they're not. They're equipped like motor vehicles. They are motor vehicles and they can drive wherever the posted speed limit is under 35 miles per hour. That being said, while golf carts are prohibited, this council may, if they desire, direct our office to prepare an ordinance that would permit them on certain roads within the city.
Roger, and when you're saying that would permit them, it's just your basic golf cart that you could use on the golf course? And if you have one on the golf course, then you can use it. We're talking about, then you can use it throughout the city without having it listed, registered as a low-velocity vehicle.
Correct. So a little caveat to that is this council would have to designate the roads that it determines are safe for the operation of golf carts based on the speed, volume and character of the roads. Now luckily, we've, the city has already engaged the Corodino Group back in 2015 to analyze our roads and we actually have a map already that sort of outlines more or less where the Corodino Group felt it was safe for golf carts to operate if the council desired to authorize them. So on that map right there, you can see that the roads in red, which are primarily Curtis Parkway, north, south Royal Point Sienna, northwest 36th Street, and I think it's East Drive. They do not recommend because of the volume and character of that traffic authorizing golf carts there. I will say that westward is in orange and that's sort of one of those areas that the Corodino Group identified as. Depending on how the council felt really, but it's ultimately a legislative determination. Outside of Curtis, which is a county road that is a four-lane split highway. We, that's the one road that the, the city would not be able to designate for golf carts. Pursuant to state law, correct. If the city council desired to authorize golf carts, there would be some signage requirements that would need to be installed. The Corodino previously estimated about $27,000 worth of signage. I don't know that that's accurate and how far that would have to be obviously ironed out if this council's will is to allow golf carts on city streets.
Can you, can you just give us an idea of what? Can you, can you just give us an idea of why, what signs we're talking, is it speed signs or is it signs saying golf carts allowed or?
Correct. It would essentially be signage that indicates that a golf cart can or cannot operate on a certain road. So for example.
So, but let me ask you, Roger, basically what the map that you're showing us, um we could, if we were to, to vote on this, is say they're allowed on every street except um, Curtis, South Royal Point Sienna and Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. So ninety-eight percent of our streets or, you know, ninety-five percent. Does that mean we'd have to have signs on ninety-five percent of our streets saying that golf carts are allowed?
I think the exact amount of signs and where the signs would go is something that has to actually be looked into administratively. But generally speaking, I, the idea is that where golf carts are not permitted to go, there would have to be signage to indicate golf carts can't go.
Oh, not go. Okay, it's not signs. Okay, so I'm, I turned it around. That where we'd need signs saying golf carts not allowed.
And where they're, right, right.
Okay, so it's not the other streets that where they're allowed is saying that they're allowed. Okay.
So, just, just to.
I'm sorry, I was just going to point out, as I look at that, right, I see the red dots. It's not designating the streets where you can, but by designating where you can't, it's at every intersection where, where you're meeting, you're intersecting a street where you can't, so still seems like a lot.
And that's. So the state law, I just want to make this point, the state law has it's, it's pretty clear that it says upon a determination that golf carts may be safely operated on a designated road or street, the responsible governmental entity shall post appropriate signs to indicate that such operation is allowed. So, the state law, I think, leaves it to the municipality to determine what appropriate signage is and where it's allowed.
And may. It doesn't say we have to.
No, it says you shall. But it says appropriate signs, so.
And that's why I was saying earlier that it's, we're going to need administrative, obviously, implementation if that were to be the case.
Okay. Do the chair?
Yes.
Um, would it be okay to go ahead and get consensus on the council um, to direct staff? Our attorneys to put an ordinance together just to get this going and then?
Ask some more. I, I still have a lot of questions. And I don't know if the rest of the council does.
Okay.
Before, okay.
All right. So, up until now, I've discussed that this council may elect to allow golf carts on certain areas. I just want to do a very quick um overview of the requirements under state law as they apply to use of golf carts. Um, any person that is over the age of eighteen may drive a golf cart as long as they have a uh, governmentally issued uh, photographic identification. That's not a driver's license. Um, and then anyone who is under the age of eighteen may drive a golf cart as long as they have a uh, valid learner's driver's license or a driver's license.
With. Roger, if they have a learner's, I'm sorry, if, if they have a learner's, do they have to have somebody with them as you normally you would in, in a car?
My understanding is that the learner's driver's license controls how um, individuals or, sorry, youth have to drive. So they would have to have um, that.
Chief, let's just ask the chief a second. Would that be your understanding then? If they're driving with a learner's in the golf cart, they have to have a an adult with them that has a valid license. Okay, for that year, basically, because we're talking the year, well, I guess they could get a learner's license at any time, or is that just?
Fifteen.
Fifteen is when they, you don't get a learner's license at sixteen. At sixteen, you just get the, the.
You apply for your license.
You can get a regular license.
You get the license.
I guess the earliest that you can get a learner's permit is fifteen.
You can wait. But then you would just get a license, right? It's been so long.
You still have to get your learner's. Yeah.
For one year. Oh, you have to get the learner's as a youth and not as an adult, right?
As a youth.
Is that eighteen or twenty-one?
Up to eighteen.
It's been a while since I've had some.
I see here eighteen.
After eighteen, you know. After eighteen, you don't have to have.
Till eighteen, so from, you would have to have a learner, so. All right. So anyone driving the golf cart with a learner's permit up to age eighteen. But if they, they got their learner's permit at fifteen, they could be driving the golf cart on their own at sixteen.
Correct.
Be a year late.
I, I do want to point out that in prior versions of the statute of the state law, it was unclear the age. I think there was a, a reference to fourteen-year-olds or, or
Right.
Much younger individuals driving, so that's a change in state law. Um, and it's a lot clearer.
Yeah.
It's a lot safer, I see.
So, an, another, these, the, the equipment requirements are, are laid out in the state law uh, very clearly, golf carts must be equipped with, with brakes, steering apparatuses, uh, safe tires, rearview mirrors and red refract- uh, reflectorized warning devices. Now, something where the city does have some um discretion is that if the city would like to have golf carts operating at night, um, you would make that determination and that would require the uh, golf carts to also be equipped with headlights, brake lights, turn signals and windshields. So again, that's if the city council wanted to allow golf carts to operate at night, then other equipment requirements would kick in.
Roger, I have a question on that. Um, so if we were to say that they have to op- that they're allowed to operate at night, Chief may be the one, who knows this, then um, if someone just doesn't operate their vehicle at night, would that mean that they still have to have those lights on their golf carts to use them on the street? They're.
So, so it would be to operate after sunset?
After sunset, so during, up to sunset, they could still operate their golf carts on the street, even though we passed something saying we allow them at night, I'm guessing.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Then I did want to mention that licensing and registration of golf carts and aspects related to golf carts are governed by state law. The attorney general has opined that municipalities may provide for voluntary uh, inspection and registration programs. Um, and then um, as well, we do get a, or the city does have a little bit of leeway as it relates to unlicensed drivers, we could enact more restrictive regulations than what's provided in state law. But again, that's for unlicensed drivers.
And fines as well?
Right. Fines are controlled. If, if we were to allow them, they would be controlled under an ordinance enforcement.
We, we develop, we have the authority to develop our own fines? How would that work?
Yeah, my understanding is that they are, uh, we could elect to have our own local code enforcement penalties, just like we have usually. Um.
I think the, the category of unlicensed drivers is fairly limited. Um, because you are looking at people. It's not allowed under eighteen.
Right.
Unless you have the learner's permit or your license. Over eighteen.
Right.
You don't have to have a driver's license, but you can have any form of government-issued ID. So, one of the, you know, when you think about who could be an unlicensed driver at that point, uh, an extreme example could be somebody who has uh, had their license revoked. They are unable to obtain an actual driver's license for whatever the reason may be. Um, we could enact regulations to serve that very specific um, population.
That if they, if, if I'm understanding, like someone has a DUI, he's had his license, he or she license suspended for a DUI, unless we have, unless we invoke legislation specifically saying that they're not to operate a golf cart in the city either, they could operate a golf cart legally if they have an ID or library card or something. They're not supposed to operate a vehicle.
Correct.
But, but if.
If you are over the age of eighteen and you have a valid government-issued license that is photographic identification, you would be able to drive a golf cart under the state, state statute.
Not a license, an ID card.
An ID.
I apologize, a government-issued photographic identific- identification card. So, in that extreme example of the library card, if the library card has a little.
They don't have a photo, okay.
But can I get clarification from Heidi? So, were you saying that the municipality can by ordinance prohibit people that maybe had their license suspended because of a DUI from operating a golf cart? Is that what you said?
No.
No.
No. Okay.
It, it's specific to additional regulations on the operation and equipment of a golf cart operated by an unlicensed driver, not as to whether they can. They can by, by statute.
Mayor, I, I was going to.
Wait, one, one second, Councilman, let's.
I, I just, I'd love to hear the law enforcement perspective, but the question that I have is that so our police officers are the ones that enforce the traffic laws. So you've got LSVs, which is what we have now, that are permitted on public roads. And you've got golf carts that are prohibited on public roads unless you make by ordinance, you permit them by ordinance. But then, how, how do you enforce, where's the accountability? Because if, if an LSV, another, somebody driving an LSV can be pulled over by a law enforcement officer and, and issue a traffic violation. But then who's, the code enforcement is the, who's going to, how can a police officer then hold somebody accountable for a violation of an ordinance? How to, how would that work?
I, I think the chief could speak specifically as it relates to moving violations and, and traffic citation issues.
Can I?
Chief, could you come up and answer that? Probably it'd be more productive if we get these questions answered as they come up. Let's, let's let, just the chief answer, Councilman.
Well, I just, I just wanted to add another question.
Okay.
Whether it's chief or, or Heidi can answer them. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about liabilities to the city.
Okay.
Right, and liabilities of accidents and, you know, when you have a, a vehicle that's insured, right, is one thing. This is a total different ballgame.
Yeah, and that's, that's a different.
Okay, well, anyways.
Okay, back to with regards to uh, citing a violator that's operating a golf cart. Um, this is a, eh, yes, they can be cited, however, um it becomes very precarious, for lack of a better term. The LSVs that we have now, it's simple, it's just like stopping a regular car. License, registration, insurance, very straightforward, it's very easy. They're involved in a crash, they have to have insurance, it's covered. Under state law with golf carts, there's no insurance, there's no registration, okay? Times they don't have to have a driver's license. The one thing, uh, speaking with some of my officers, we're like, okay, they don't have a registration, so one of the things we have to put on a uniform traffic citations, year, make, model of the vehicle. I've looked at a number of golf carts and there's nothing telling me what year or make, make, I'm lucky, that usually sometimes is pretty much out there, model, golf cart. So, uh, some of these do have uh, vehicle identification numbers, but uh, to get to them, I, I'm not, I don't own one. But I know that we'd probably end up having to I don't want to say tear the thing apart, but we're going to have to take it apart to a certain extent to get to it, because I have a feeling it's probably down in the engine compartment. Again, um, I said it before, what we have in place is perfect. Um, not broke, don't fix it, but I'm, I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Um, do, do the chair.
Oh, yes, Vazquez.
Yes, and then I think, I think Councilman Santin had something.
Oh, this was just reorienting something that was said.
Vazquez, you had a question?
Yeah, no, my, so my other, my other concern is, has to do with liabilities and liabilities to the city allowing vehicles on the streets, whether it's limited or not. Uh, eh, you know, for, for uh, accidents, right? Are we liable, right? They have an insurance, then, then that's how it's handled, but uh, are we, are we liable?
Heidi, Roger?
It, it strikes me that where liability comes in is when you were saying, when you were talking Heidi about that the state statute says that the municipality has to, shall uh, provide appropriate signage of where a, a golf cart would not be allowed. So does that mean, I mean, or where it, where it would be or where it is not allowed? Where it is allowed.
So they know.
All right. So I know that one of the things about the Corodino study is that it, it seemed like kind of overkill on the signage, right? That was kind of one of the things that came up. But then like, if you have, if you do it every other block or something, and then somebody goes into where they're not supposed to and they get hit by a car, then it, is the city liable? Because you could argue what was, what is appropriate or not in terms of signage. Is that why the Corodino study kind of had the overkill, like to protect us from liability?
I, I can't speak to why they would identify all of those locations. There's nothing to prevent you from I, from posting signage that says golf carts are not allowed here. This is what, what Roger's been explaining are the things that you must do if you choose to go down this route. Getting into a discussion of city liabilities is um can be extensive. People can choose to include the city in a lawsuit if they wish. Um, what the result may be is going to be very fa- fact-specific. Um, I think that if, if you were to go in the route of adopting an ordinance, I would do it based on state law allows you to adopt the ordinance, you're allowed to designate which roads. You already have a study from nine years ago that gave you some uh, some recommendations. You can choose to adopt that map. Um, and I think the, the easiest way of explaining it would be as, as Roger started saying, golf carts are allowed everywhere except these four streets, Thirty-Sixth Street, Curtis Parkway, East Drive, South Royal. Um, then i- if you're going down your decision-making tree of whether to allow these or not, um, aside from that question of whether to allow them, it's, do you want to allow them at night? And if you want to allow them at night, then they're going to have to have all of these other uh, equipment specifications.
But it's not just about whether or not you allow them, right? Because the mayor asked, let's say, okay, we will allow the carts, because you could say they're only allowed from, from uh, you know, dawn till dusk, right? Uh, but if the city decides, okay, they're allowed at night, but they have to have this, like, that doesn't we're still not requiring them to have those features. It's just, they have to have it in order to operate at night.
Correct.
Right.
Right, so, through the chair, if they're gonna go ahead and drive a cart that does not meet the requirements for driving at night, then they're gonna get cited or pulled over if they get caught. You're not gonna catch every person that's breaking the law here, anywhere, not here or in Miami Springs. Okay, there's probably people driving right now without driver's license. Unless they do something wrong, you're not gonna know they're driving without a license. Um, as far as liability to city, I'm not an attorney, but I think it's an at-will decision. And if it comes down to factuality, at the time of, God forbid, an, an incident, at the time of scene, there's gonna be pictures taken, the golf cart or whoever was doing something wrong will be noted. I think that uh, if we, Heidi, is if, is there a way um, where if a resident wants to use their golf cart where they would have to come to the city and sign a hold harmless? I mean, we're getting, I mean, I don't really care for that, but eh, if there's any way to, to put in writing, um, I know that Kivas Kane, even though maybe they're not supposed to be doing it, um, they go, they get a little decal, fifteen bucks, you put it, it works as a identifier, right? We could do that. You take a picture and it's filed. I, I don't know. I, I don't care for that, but I just want to have all these concerns where the Florida statute's not even requiring, um I mean, I trust the state, I don't know.
Well, and I think with issues with liability, you know, usually it's like anything else, it's two people involved and it's between them. You know, this golf cart hit them and, you know, the city, eh, the liability issues may be if we didn't provide a sign saying they're not allowed here, but I would think that if we adopt something, we can, um, as Roger said, that we can require some things and one of the requirements would seem to me um, be anyone that operates a golf cart in the city must be knowledgeable as to all of these regulations, including where they're allowed, the times that they're allowed, whatever, and just make that like a.
That, would that necessitate registration? Can we require registration?
Actually, I think the registration might be like Kivas Kane does of, you know, that you get a little decal and that has a number and that number ties into the owner.
Actually, no, not, we're, he just said, we, the, Roger just said, we're not allowed to, to, for registration. We can ask for voluntary registration, but if somebody says, no, I'm not gonna do it, they don't do it.
So we can't require them to have a city of Miami Springs golf cart decal? That ties that, that, that has a number to it that means this is the owner of the car.
And I, and I, and I should, and I should, and I don't want to mention other.
And I, and I, and I should, and I should, and I don't want to mention other municipalities. But these municipalities have had these ordinances in place, like from the nineties, so.
Kivas Kane updated in two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't want to speak about that. I don't, I could only. Focus on what, uh, the state statute says.
Do the chair, just like anything else, if there's a golf cart. And they're on an obvious road, and I'm telling you, my cops, I can see them all day, Curtis Parkway, westward, they're there. Chances are you're gonna get caught if you're with a golf cart on one of those roads, chances are you're gonna get caught. You have to have a form of identification. And whoever's driving that golf cart at that time is responsible for driving that golf cart, correct? Correct? Their response, whoever's driving the golf cart, if they get pulled over, they get cited.
Presume so.
So that's the only way, so.
What we're talking about is how would you cite him? Is what the chief is saying.
Identification.
What would you say?
They have to have.
But, but how do you cite someone? It's you, if there's no traffic.
There would have.
Ordinance, it would have to be code enforcement, right? A code violation?
How? It depends upon what the violation is. It all depends upon what ordinance is created and passed by the city council. Now, from my professional opinion, if you created a ordinance that required registration. And they get a sticker put on their golf cart, I would inform my officers to never stop anyone. Because it's an unlawful stop. You're going above and beyond what state statute allows if you were to pass that ordinance.
Yeah, they, they don't.
An illegal search and seizure could open us up to vicarious liability.
So chief, if, if, say, your officers observe. Someone that appears to be, and I've seen this even now before we allow golf carts. Is, you know, in our neighborhoods, um, a bunch of kids driving around in the day with their friends hanging out of the. Um, LSV. Um, they don't look like they're fourteen, fifteen to me. They look like they're twelve years old, you know, and their friends.
Hope you called us.
Pardon me?
Hope you called us.
Well, so they're going in one direction. And, you know, there's a bunch of kids, I'm more concerned about the bunch of kids, and a lot of times I've even followed them. Just because I'm scared, one of the kids are gonna fall out and, you know, and be hurt and they're gonna leave them behind. Um, no, I haven't called. I've watched it numerous times though, throughout the city and it's very concerning. Um, and you know, I call just about everything in the city. Um, what would you like? Walk me through what would happen. You would pull them over, say you see, first of all, but this could happen with a golf, let's. Let me do it this way, try to simplify. With an LSV, if you saw that, you would pull them over. And they're either underage, they've got too many kids, it's supposed to hold four people and they've got six or eight. On there, so there's a whole bunch of things because you can tie it into the registration for the LSV.
Right, if they're underage.
Happen if it was a golf.
Do not have, if they do not have a driver's license. Alright, then we're gonna be reaching out to the parents at that point.
If it's an LSV.
If it's an LSV.
Okay, but if it's a golf cart.
It would be the same thing if they were below the age of having a learner's permit. Um, we would, in either situation, if they were fifteen years of age to seventeen years of age and did not have a learner's permit. Um, they could be cited, both situations.
Mayor, can I just say something? I want. When we went down this road before, one of the things that, that I was pushing for, and I know the councilman, uh. The councilman here also was, was, uh, behind it as well. We understand, I understand, because I've been through it, I understand that the process of getting a golf cart. To certify it as an LSV and get a tag, it's onerous, because you gotta, there's a bunch of hoops you gotta go through, right? So what we proposed back then, which was, uh, about two or three years ago, was. Having the city create a process where you would certify that they had all the same safety features and that they had the insurance and everything. To just so that the insurance would be a little less, right? Because LSV insurance is more expensive, and so you wouldn't have to. Rent a trailer, take it, get it weighed, take it to Opa-locka, to the DMV, you would still. Have all the same features, but the city would certify the, with the decal rather than getting a tag. The problem was that we found out back then is the state does not allow cities to. Require certain things of golf carts, and that's exactly where we're at now. If you just allow golf carts, you can't. Uh, you can't require people to register it, you can't require people to have, uh, seat belts, you can't require people. To have a light on their tag at night. There's a lot of things that you can't require. And, uh, safety features, I think, are, you can't require people to have insurance. And those are all really important things. I know that. If you allow them at night and you say they have to have, uh, brake lights, brake lights are important during the day too, I think, and turn signals. Those are important things. Uh, and if you're just gonna allow people to, you know, you, you don't have to have a child restraint seat, you don't have to have seat belts. You don't have to have turn signals or a brake light or a windshield wiper. Uh, just because, you know, it's a golf cart and it's at night and, and, and you can't require somebody to register and you can't require somebody to, uh. Show you that they have a valid driver's license if they're over eighteen, they could, they could have a suspended license. I just feel like. For, and I get it, because what, what we were pushing for before. Uh, was to kind of ease the burden on, 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 because we like golf carts. To ease the burden on residents, to make it a little easier for them to have what they have now in an LSV, but not have to go through the state, but if. The reason we couldn't back then is because we couldn't require some really important things, and I think the safety features to me are extremely important. Uh, and I just feel like, like just opening it up, the way, and it's because of the state. The state is preempting us on a lot of things here. But in order to allow just golf carts, I think that we are making things really unsafe. Opening us up to, uh, potential tragedies. Making it difficult for people in cars, because you don't know if somebody's braking, if they don't have the turn signal, they don't have lights. They don't have to have all these, but they may not have insurance. Like, I, I just feel like that, that's opening up a huge can of worms, and that's where this died. The last time, when we were told, hey, you know what, we can't come up with a process, right? I know the police were saying at the time, Chief Guzman was like, hey, listen, you know, like. That's, that's, you're asking the police a lot to come up with a process to certify golf carts to make sure that they have all these things. That's just, those things are important, but the state won't even allow us. So what, now we're gonna just allow it without all the safety features and without the insurance and without registering things like that? To me, I feel like that. Go down that road.
Through the chair. People drive cars and they don't put their, their seat belts on either. I'm all about safety, uh, but I'm not gonna be ignorant to the fact that. People have to own up to their responsibilities. I can't baby everybody in the city, and I'm not, I would like to see something nice for our city. Listen, you can go ahead and just make it according to a Florida statute. If you want to make it, um. Not optional to have all of the requirements, headlights, brake lights, turn signals and everything, regardless of the time of day, you can do that. You can do that. And also you have, what, what was it, like October? We have sundown at five PM, it's pitch black. So that's something that, let me finish my point.
Require that, that's the point.
Through the chair. It says here that the government, okay? The local jurisdiction. Can create an ordinance. If it's safe to drive at night, I don't see, night has no difference. Night. Right now in the summer, nighttime is at eight PM and forward. Uh, daylight, or, or the, when reversed, what are the daylight savings? You have nighttime at five PM, so we're gonna have to. And Heidi, are we not allowed? To, to make sure that these golf carts have all of these requirements, headlights, irrespective of day or night?
If you, if you authorize golf carts at night.
We're gonna have to, because in October at five PM, it's nighttime. And let's be honest, we have games going on during the week, during the school year. I mean, the point is to make things easier. We gotta give our city a shot, trust them. If it doesn't work out, how many times have we put ordinance together? And if it becomes really a safety concern, pull back, remove it. But we've talked about this item over and over and over. It's no different that people are not more responsible on LSVs. They're not. And you, you. If, if there, if there's an accident between two cars in Miami Springs. You can still try to get sued by the city. It doesn't matter. It's, it's, and it's an accident. You know, we can't control, we can't control a minor. How many times minors get behind the wheel? We don't know. Unless they do something wrong. Hopefully they don't, but I think that this is a beautiful asset to try to incorporate in our city with safety measures. Increases property values. You have a, a golf course. We're the first golf course. In Miami-Dade County. We can reduce costs from the golf course as well by. You know, they would have to get permission to use their own golf course to go to the country club, but that's less. Operational cost for us having to lease golf carts. We're looking at all of the negatives, and really the only negative thing here is the persons that have seatbelt and they can't be registered. But guess what? They need to have a learner's permit, drive with a licensed person with a, actually, it's twenty-one years old is who they have to be with, not eighteen. According to what I'm reading here. Or after that, a valid driver's license. You had many of the accidents, I saw the two articles back from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and sixteen, I don't know what's happening now. But why not give this a shot? If you get pulled over, you have identification on you. I, I don't.
I just, I just want to clarify, I just wanted to clarify something that you said. According to the statute, it's a, it's not a driver's license that you, that you have to have, it's, uh, just any Florida or state issue.
Without a license, but you do need a learner's permit, but you have to drive.
Oh, that's if you're underage, but if, if I don't, let's say, let's say, for example. Once, once I, once I, once I turn eighteen or whatever the age is, and I never got a learner's permit. But I have an ID, once I get to a certain age, I can drive a golf cart and do whatever I want. I don't have to have, it's not a, it's not a natural progression, right? You don't have to have it.
I think there's mythology behind that of why the Florida statute was written that way, based on probably maturity levels and comprehensivity, but, I mean.
Do, what I, what I, I just wanted to tou, touch up on, on your point. This ordinance and, and speaking with, with the attorneys ad nauseam regarding this. They don't want to editorialize, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it, this, this. Uh, statute is, it's difficult, it's very tricky. Um, in one hand, they're saying, yeah, go ahead, you, if you want to allow them, you can. But they're also telling you, you're not gonna restrict it. You're gonna, you're gonna allow them, you're gonna allow them. So we can do certain. Certain things if we're gonna allow them at night, we can make sure that they have. Um, um, lights, headlights and whatever, but you can't require them to come to you beforehand in order to operate it and say.
Well, listen.
Oh, we're, we're gonna get, give you a little sticker, you can go in and operate. The only way you can enforce it is if you catch them out at night driving around.
Again, just like anything else, if something's happening at night, a crime or something and they get caught, you get caught. We are, we are at free will here, right? We are free will. The liabilities are everywhere. We're trying to incorporate something with safety measures. We're not telling you, you have to drive a golf cart. That is your choice, okay? There's a lot of families that want to go out on a golf cart and take their kids to school, not necessarily on a bike all the time, a hundred people are speeding down the roads. And they're hitting somebody on the bike, or you have all these situations. I can go down the rabbit hole, but I'm not. I'm just trying to provide a more less carbonated footprint, enjoyable option. For dropping off kids at school, for going to the groceries, for going to your local dentistry, or your doctor's office, or a gym. Or, or, or carpool, you know, with a cup, but you have, you know, if you have a golf cart for four people. I think there's specificity here that you can't have more than four people on a golf cart, so it's visibly, if you see more than that and there's four chairs. You're gonna get pulled over. Hopefully, you don't get caught, but you get caught, but again, it comes down to the control. We either could give this a shot and see how it works, or we don't.
Through the chair.
You have other cities. Doing this day in and day out, and I like to see facts, bring me facts of accidents of every city in the golf cart that have had. You know, continuous, continuous, you would hear it. And things are gonna happen, but this is not necessarily a bad thing.
I, okay, I don't think any of us feel it's a bad thing, that's why we're discussing it. No one is. Against it, I can tell you on mine, I'm undecided. I like, and I've said it, I like the ambience of a golf course community, I'd love that, you know, I think it's just really fitting to us. It's also, you know, we have, we, we're elected to be responsible, to make responsible decisions, so, um, Councilman Vasquez.
Yes, I, I. Councilman, if I had talked about how we, we've come to this back and forth over the last couple of years. And I appreciate your, your enthusiasm, um, Councilwoman, Bravo. But, you know, like the chief said, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I like to move that we do not allow golf carts on the streets of Miami Springs.
Are you making a motion?
I just made a motion.
Is there a second?
Sure, second.
Okay, discussion.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
If, I mean, obviously, safety is the number one thing, and I don't think, there's no concession in my part on that part. So if you do all that, you get to that point of having to put all these things, what are we really saving the resident? Insurance, that honestly, if you hit my new car on the side. On a golf cart or, or a, a LSV, I want you to have insurance. And the other thing is what? The inconvenience that we're inconveniencing someone to go and take these extra steps. So at the ultimate, at the end of the day, we're making you do all the safety things. We basically are telling you, you're in our, you're an LSV. Just take the next step. Which is, yeah, a little inconvenience, but this is not a necessity. This is like kind of a perk that you have. If tomorrow you had to make a decision in your household and you had to get rid of the. Golf cart because you have to, you know, your kids are going to school and you don't have enough money. This is a perk, you're gonna get rid of this golf cart in a heartbeat. So I just think it's something that, this inconvenience that we're giving them. It's not that dramatic. Yes, there are extra steps you have to take. Because if you're not making a concession on the safety. Which I will not, meaning that I want all those features on there. Then you're basically, you're an R, RLSV, all the only thing difference is that you're not making an appointment with the, the bureau. And you're, and you don't have insurance, but to me, I think you need to have insurance, because if you hit my car. I wanna come after you for, for hitting my car.
But, but, hold on, the, the, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Saying, the truth is, I want you to have insurance.
We can't require it.
You can't require it?
Can't require it. No, we can't require it on golf carts.
No, but, but, but I think the point you're making, Councilman.
You're almost there.
For my clarification is that you're saying, we, it's required for an LSV, is that correct?
Correct.
Insurance is required.
So you're almost there, you're basically, the only thing difference is that you're not getting your insurance. Then I think it's a good thing. And the other thing is that you're taking that extra step. By having to make an appointment, but once that's made. That same golf cart that now has been converted to an LSV. Becomes a lower cost, because I'm not gonna make this thing for free. At the end of the day, we're gonna have to get our police officers involved. To get this inspections, or every year to do a registration, there's money involved.
Hold on, hold on, Mayor, I mean, Mayor, if I may. The state prohibits us from doing registrations. We cannot do a registration. We can't charge a registration fee, we can't do anything.
Well, the city's doing it.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying what the state is allowing.
I got that. So we're gonna go against the state. We understand it, going against the state, we're going against all the things that we want, which is to have a safe. Motor vehicle, or in this case, a, a golf cart, or whatever you want to call it, but the point is that we're gonna make it safe. You are almost there. What's the big deal? Now you have to do insurance? Well, I want you to have insurance. Why wouldn't you want to have insurance? Yeah, because if you're not on the other side of the car that you hit with the golf cart. But at the end of the day, it's not that much more that we're doing. Then after that, the registration. For the DMV, I know friends of mine who have the LSV, it's only thirty bucks. From there on, they will be registering their cars.
Thirty bucks.
Thirty, forty bucks, no more.
Seventy-five bucks and then seventy-five dollars every year after that. Golf cart insurance, about five hundred dollars a year.
It's not a, I just don't think it's a huge. Uh, thing to ask, uh, safety. So if you're gonna have to go through all these features, you're basically almost an LSV. And, and the insurance, in my, the way I take it, I think you need to have insurance.
Right. And.
And we don't even, we, we can't, we really can't require you to have it, but.
So through the chair, just when this came up a couple of weeks back before we asked the attorneys to, to kind of chew this up for us and bring it in, I appreciate that they did. And I appreciate that it came up again. Uh, when it came up, I was asking like, well, what's changed? Because we kind of hit this dead end the, the last time. But online, uh, a media source said, because I was pretty clear when we, when it came up a few, uh, meetings ago. Like, if we're gonna compromise safety unless something has changed, right? If, if it means that we can't require safety features, if it's gonna compromise safety. Then I'm not on board. And it was written online that, oh, well, there's electric bikes and there's scooters and there's other things that, but those things don't carry six people in them like, like some of these golf carts. Uh, again, if, if we could require the safety features, then, you know, then I would be on board. But there's, there's no way that, that I feel like we should be. Uh, just opening it up, that you don't have to have turn signals and brake lights and, uh, seat belts. And requiring child restraint seats and, uh, and having insurance. Like, to me, tho, those are extremely important, which is why it's part of how you register and, and convert a golf cart to an LSV. The, the original intent was, can we get them to, to have all those safety features, but we do it as a process through the city? And we were told by the attorneys, no, the state does not allow you to require those things of golf carts. And to me, that's where. And to me, that's where it ended. Because I, I wasn't willing to compromise on the safety or the insurance or any of those things. So I, I really feel like that's, that's the point. Are we going to, you know, go with the system where you have insurance and all those safety features, or a, a system where you don't? And, uh, I, I can't support a system where we don't require those things.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just reading here from Golf Cart Attorney. It was just published in twenty twenty-four that golf carts are not required to have the PIP insurance of property damage coverage. Neither LSVs nor golf carts are required to carry bodily injury insurance, but the owner should do so. So, the only reason why, I mean, I don't know if that could be contested if they're pulled over, even if they have a tag. But it's, according to, to this attorney and his, his, his article, it's still optional. So you can have a LSV with a, with a tag and it hits you, but they don't have to have insurance either.
And you won't get your tag.
Well, not according to the state of Florida.
State law says that a low-speed vehicle or mini truck must be registered and insured. In accordance with section three twenty point oh two and titled pursuant to chapter three nineteen. And the site on that. Is three sixteen point two one two two subsection one subsection C.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Another thing, I think you mentioned, Chief, uh, we just went through this whole thing with the school zones. And how the little study they were done. We were all surprised how bad our areas are with speeding in those areas. Without a tag and twenty miles is still over the speed limit in the, in the zone. We can't even figure out who those people are. So to me, it's like, yeah, it's one extra layer. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna compromise myself on the, on the, on the safety. And if you gotta go through all that. I think it's, the after step is not a good thing.
Ask this, so that I'm clear on this. If someone has a golf cart right now. That golf cart, there, there's processes that they have to do, but that golf cart, a golf cart can be ma- made an LSV. Right? So if you own a golf cart and you want to turn it into an LSV to be, as, as of right now, to be legal on the road. You would have to get the insurance, get the registration, get the safety features. A golf cart, per se, if golf, if golf carts are allowed on the road in our city. Um, they don't have to have seat belts.
Correct.
So people do not have to be, the children do not have to be in, in child restraint.
Correct.
Devices, um, and they don't have to carry insurance.
Correct.
Other than that, as far as the age driving, it's pretty similar. I mean, there's not a, I don't see a big difference in that, you know, as far as age. Um, you know, people drive with suspended licenses. All the time, so unless they're doing something wrong. I'm trying to look at the, the actual features of, you know, you're operating with a bunch of kids, like I've seen. You're not wearing seat belts and, you know, you make a turn and you go flying out and there's, it's not that you go flying out and hit the road and get a really bad road burn. So you go flying out and, you know, a car's coming and you get hit by the car that's coming, you know, um, facing you. Um, that doesn't mean that everyone riding wears a seatbelt, just like in a car. Not everyone rides a seatbelt, but they're there. And for the most part. I think the younger generation, you know, and, you know, have, it's kind of been ingrained in them. You get in, you feel naked if you're not wearing a seatbelt. So, the, the reason that we would not, and I know we re- revisited this, but I'm still a little confused. The reason that we would not provide a, a means, a facility here in Miami Springs for you to get your LSV. Your golf cart certified crew, you know, whatever, uh, registered is, is because of the cost. Or, I mean, I can see a liability with that, that, you know, we have to have some. That's where I see liability come in, that we. It's just the state doesn't allow us to do it. They have to do it on their own and then go to.
There's no mandate in place for golf carts to be inspected and regulated.
Okay.
As you're saying, um, and for us to create an ordinance, making people register them.
Okay.
Is also not.
So basically, they have to do it on their own, get it turned, made into an LSV, and then get it registered, and then they can use it. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand some things. All right, any more discussion? On this, does anyone? Have anyone, anything else they wanna say? Roger.
The chief. Through the chair.
Yes, we have a, we're gonna take a motion, so we're gonna take a vote.
No, I'm not ready for the vote.
Do something that we currently aren't doing?
Well, we have to.
Cause this was just a discussion.
Oh, yes. Okay, good point.
What we have placed, I don't, I mean, I said that it out of respect for the councilman, but. We don't have to vote to not do something that we're currently not doing, do we?
To the chair. Let me just make a point here too, cuz, you know, somebody can get struck by a car on a golf cart, and they're not insured either. But I just, I wanna bench my item. I'm gonna bench my item to a future date.
Hold on one second, and let's get the question answered that Councilman Fahed posed to the, and then you can make your comment.
Okay.
Cause we have a question for our city attorney. Repeat the question.
Yeah, the question was, I know that, that the councilman, uh, Councilman Vasquez, right, we don't have to vote. On to not do something that we currently are not doing, do we? I mean, there's.
It's, I think it's an attempt to put closure to a discussion that's been ongoing. Um, you can choose not to take action tonight.
But it, it, in order to take action, you have to have consensus. So if there is no consensus, then there's no action to be taken.
Could approach it that way as well. There's, either way.
Okay, Councilman, um, Vasquez, you made the motion. Do you wanna continue with the motion, or do you wanna pull it? It's, uh. You want to continue, you made a motion. You heard what, what?
Yes.
Heidi just responded to Councilman Fahed. So I'm just asking you, do you want, you made a motion, there's a second. Do you want us to take a vote on it, or do you want to, based on what Heidi just said, is pull the motion? If we pull it, then I guess this can. I mean, anything can be brought up again at any time, even if we vote no, that's, um, okay, so.
Mayor, my concern, I'll just say it publicly, my concern is that then you're reading that, uh, these are the people that voted against golf carts. Right? I think it's a, it's a more nuanced conversation. I think we, we call things golf carts when they're really LSVs. I think that the, the conversation should stand on its own. Uh, and I personally don't feel like we need to. But if there isn't consensus to take action, and I mean, we can just do a straw poll here, but if there isn't consensus to take action. There's no action to be taken, as far as I'm concerned.
Vice Mayor, are you withdrawing your second?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Councilman?
I withdraw the motion then, I just.
You wanna withdraw the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So, now, count, uh, Councilwoman.
I'm, I'm gonna bench this for a future date, possibly December, January. Um, and I'm also gonna look at to talking with other police officers in other cities to see how they're really doing it. You know, cuz if you're seeing that some of these cities that have these golf carts registered in a city and they get a small little permit. Um, it's not allowed anymore. I'm still seeing it active. Do they have a deadline to remove that? If they don't. Um, is a grandfather in? How is this working? I really wanna get opinions. I respect Chief's opinion. He has his experience here in Miami Springs. I wanna get a feel for, um, other police departments in other cities that have, actually are actively working. With golf carts in their communities and see what it is, what their, their opinions are and, and what they've come across, or if they have maybe other methods. Um, to control and provide more safety measures.
I can tell you from my experience, from talking to other municipalities, um, not just in, in Dade County. But throughout that have it, um, it's like any other issue, um, there's problems. There aren't, you know, twenty percent of the. Things are, you know, are causing the majority of work. It's, it's one of those things. And I think ultimately, we just have to make the decision. Based on it. I can tell you, I'm very undecided. I really like golf carts. I really like, you know, the facility of it and all this. But, you know, I see a big responsibility and what, you know, because of what I've seen, uh, you know, of what I see with these kids and now saying. In addition, and these are low-velocity vehicles, cuz low, low speed, I keep saying velocity, because I've always noticed they have a tag. So that means that we're gonna have even more.
Yeah, maybe we should reverse it.
More of golf carts that aren't on the road right now of, you know, the kids riding around, and they're having fun. My goodness, I've been that age and it's a blast. You know, we've all been that age and it's a wonderful thing. And, and if you're the parents, you know. You want your kids to have fun doing that. They're around our city or streets. You know, it's kind of, of a hard thing to say, no, you're not. You know, sit here and. And sit on the front porch and don't move. Um, so. I see several more golf carts, low-velocity vehicles on our roads, possibly doing the same thing. And that's why I'm very, you know. Non-committed both ways. But, all right, so you're going to bench it. Is there anything else? Let's, did you wanna ask a question based on this, Councilwoman?
I had a question for Chief. I'm seeing a lot of more like motorized, um, bicycles. That are hitting at least thirty, thirty-five miles per hour. There's no tags on them.
Be quite honest with you, most of those vehicles are electric.
Right. So, but they're.
Perfectly, perfectly allowed under Florida state statute.
But they're not registered or anything like that.
Need to be. They're electric. They're not motor vehicles.
And they're.
They're not, there's not a combustion engine on it. It's completely legal for them to be on the roadway.
But, okay.
It's not an issue.
So, but it's still, it's still a vehicle at the end of the day.
Under the state of Florida, it's, it, it doesn't fall under the category of like a, a Tesla, an electric vehicle.
But it's keeping up with traffic. It goes as fast as an LSV.
Been on one that moves quite quickly, um, but.
And they don't need to be insured either.
Completely allowed under Florida state statute.
So something right into the city here like that, you could do it right now. It hit you and they're not insured. No different from a golf cart.
This, the state statute say, says specifically, golf carts are not allowed. Now, if cities want to, here are the rules you gotta live by, which is what he's saying, those bicycles are not prohibited.
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't require them to have, um, anything like a golf cart. It's still a moving substance that can strike you and cause damage.
Money has to have reflectors to be operated at night. It must have lights. It has to have a lot of different things.
So we can require golf carts also to have all of those things, according to the Flor- Florida statute, the municipality wants. I'm gonna bench this, cuz I'm not done with this. Until, in my mind, I'm clear, that's just me, and I want everybody to feel better about this, at least the majority.
You need to have a, a majority on it, so, you know, it's not, like you said, it's something you can continue to pursue, nothing. Even if we vote against something, something can be brought back. I mean, it's just, you know, this is an ongoing process and we're always trying to, you know.
Thank you for the discussion. I appreciate it.
Okay, um, all right, nothing else on that? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
I've not heard anything here that convinces me that it's a good idea to have golf. In the city of Miami. We had concerns. We thought we could do some things. We can't do those things. That's, nothing else gonna change my mind on that, so just, you know, just for the record.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so with that, Chief, thank you for your input. Roger and Heidi. Thank you for the great deal of work that you've done on this. It's funny, something like this that seems. I'm always amazed in life, you know, things that you think are real easy and something like this are very complicated. And other things that you think are gonna take, it'll take. Years to get this done, or months, or whatever, with one phone call, it's like, okay. And that's kind of part of, of the fun of it. Um, okay, so let's move on to, um, reports and recommendations from our city attorney.
I just wanna commend Roger on the incredible amount of work that he's done, both on, not just on the golf carts. But he also put in a significant amount of work becoming a tree expert, um, and speaking with some of, so, some of the engaged, yeah.
No, think about that, Roger, arborist attorney. You know how they all have specializations now? This is maybe a calling.
Yes, so I just wanted to commend him. I know, um, it, it did seem like a long road to get here, and I know that the, uh. The board that made the recommendations submitted those in September. We started processing those, getting an ordinance ready. Uh, then working with CGA when, when, when we were able to get to a point that the ordinance was ready. Um, and then brought it for first reading. There was feedback. We went out into the community. I know Liz reached out to, to different organizations that were requested. Roger spent some time working with a professor on it. So, um, I'm glad we got to the finish line and I wanted to commend his.
Thank you, Heidi and Roger. Um, city manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, really quick, I just wanted to, uh, recognize Public Works, Liz, um, Tammy. Um, Omar, recently, we were under the threat of. I'm not gonna say it was a hurricane, turned into a tropical storm and hurricane hit, you know, the Panhandle area. But we were projected, it was expected that we were gonna receive, forecasted a lot of rain, perhaps flooding. And at a moment's notice, I said, we need sandbags. Let's get sandbags out. And they dropped everything they, they were doing, and they made it happen. So I wanna recognize them and who had the staff. I mean, there was lightning and the, the staff were still helping with, with shovels and filling up bags. So I do wanna recognize them, uh, for a job well done. I appreciate them.
Sandbags, um, are usable again.
Yes.
You know, so that whoever. You know, we, we're preparing our residents, um, for the ones that picked it up, which are the ones that know that they, you know, have the potential.
And not, not only.
They're prepared for future incidences, so.
But not only did we, did we prepare sandbags and people can come pick them up there across the street, on the parking lot where the golf course is. But we delivered it to the problematic area where the, where construction is going on right now to fix flooding. Unfortunately, we're, the project's still ongoing. We delivered sandbags to all the homes over there, so we, they did a great job.
Wonderful.
And that's all I have to say for today, Mayor.
Thank you. Tammy? Anything? Okay, um, Sylvia, we never give you a chance when you're here. Is there something our city, esteemed city planner? And our public works director, our new public works director. Okay, all right, wonderful. Okay, city council, let's start with Councilman Santin.
Well, all the students, welcome back on Thursday, I guess, and Walter. Says, you've been enjoying your summer. I know you haven't really worked that's hard. Just kidding. Well, just, uh, I hope you enjoyed, uh, we, we got what, one more day or two before all the crazy traffic starts again? Thank you, kids, parents.
Okay, uh, Councilman Bra- Bravo.
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for collaborating on a very long discussion. Um, those are always very fun. Uh, I wanna thank Heidi and Roger for, um, helping us and staff. And I wanna thank staff members too, on the tree ordinance. That was a work of, uh, labor and love. I learned a lot. Um, so anybody who has questions on the tree ordinance, you can call me. I probably know what the answer is.
Do you wanna start training?
Actually, I was gonna see if our newly, uh, direct publics director would sign up for that. I don't know. He looks smart enough to pass one of those classes. Um, hey, a two and one.
No pressure.
Uh, but he looks capable. He's ready, sharp. Thanks for being here. Um, I think that's it. That's it.
That's it. Vice Mayor?
Uh, yeah, so I remember being a kid and watching TV and the commercials would come on for back to school and I'd be like, oh, no. So, but we are, uh, coming back to school, so I wish, uh, all the local schools, uh, good luck and, uh. And we look forward to having the kids back in the building.
Councilman Vasquez?
Um, yeah, well, first of all, uh, you know, most of you know that I've been, had some health challenges during the month, month of July, and I appreciate it. You know, inquiries and questions, and I am, I am back, um, and so I'm glad to be back. Um, and, uh, just to announce that today, um, Myra and I and Victor Anghe were at FIU. Uh, getting his ID. He's registered already. He's, uh, we are now a Panther family. Go FIU, right? Looking forward to him getting started, uh, next week.
Okay, and just for me, um, I want to thank everyone on the council and, you know, our city attorneys or city planner. Um, city manager and assistant city manager for the collaboration that we do when we have these discussions, these, you know. These are, are issues that are important for our city, the golf cart today, the, the tree ordinance and so many others. And I think we all feel comfortable, um, voicing our opinions, discussing them, hearing other points of view. And we ultimately always reach something that, um, even if we don't reach a decision sometimes right away. It's, we've moved forward. We've gotten that much more momen- momentum to build on, knowledge, um. Uh, to build on, and, um, we're, we do a really good job at that, and I appreciate that. Not, not all cities do that, and I can tell you. Um, I hear that from a lot of other council people and mayors. So, um. Thank you, JC, Tammy and Public Works for the sandbags. Um, I, I know that was Friday morning. Um, by Friday afternoon, they were there and, um, uh, very, very impressive. And I heard from a lot of residents who were panicking because another rain event. Now they're calling them, you know, it's not just a storm, it's like an extended rain event, which means it's gonna rain here and everywhere else, and it's just gonna sit over us and. Luckily, it wasn't that bad, but, um, you know, the next one could be around the corner. So for all that, um, thank you so much. And, um, the League of Cities, uh, conferences this week and, um, in Hollywood, so I'm looking forward. So I'm looking forward to, um, collaborating with a lot of other cities and hopefully getting a lot of information. Um, with all that, God bless Miami Springs, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mayor.